...regular meetings were Monday, June 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The mics are not working tonight, so we'll have to speak loud, if you will. And we've got a number of different things that are unusual for our meetings. So we'll get into that as we go, but the first thing would obviously be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America, and it is a republic for which there is justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose every justice is served.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yep.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Masked and ready.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Here. And I would propose that we make a motion to excuse Amanda for the meeting tonight. Do I have a second?
I'll start it.
And any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And before we go any further, I would like to apologize, as the Planning Commission Chair, I'd like to apologize to the general public, and our applicants, and our planning commissioners, and the staff here, for the inadvertent error that did not allow the general public to join our meeting in May. It simply was an error that happened, and we will try to make those practice good tonight, but I do apologize in advance to all of the participants. And it was just something that happened, nothing we could do about it, and nothing that, you know, could be done. So, having said that, we'll move forward. Do I have an approval for the agenda? Motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
And it's for a second. And discussion? I have one change here, and that would be under seven new business. We've got a public hearing scheduled for Joyology. Is anybody here from Joyology? We will not be holding that hearing because there was not any proper documentation, there was lack of documentation, actually. So we will not be doing 7A, so that will be stricken from our agenda for tonight. So nobody's here. We will renotice that, obviously, when it becomes full-blown and all of that, so thank you. So having said that, any other changes? Sue, roll call, please, for the committee?
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yep.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Number three, public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would wish to have a comment at this point? Please, you know what, just stand in the middle of the room there, probably, since the mics aren't working anyway.
I'm a loud talker.
And just give us your name, address, and your concern.
My name is Andrea Hendrick. The address that I am inquiring about is 2335 West Main. The reason that I am asking you to kind of maybe break protocol and consider an email that was sent earlier regarding the setbacks on the north and west side of that property. I represent the applicants that will be applying for a processor and row facility at that address, will be applying for the July application. It would be really helpful if we could potentially get your feedback to give to our design professionals about those setbacks. We think it's an appropriate use for that site, it's zoned correctly, but there is a non-conforming building that exists there that encroaches into the north and west setback. We sent over the plans, Ms. Allery has a copy of those, I'm not sure if they got passed out, but we'd like to consider, if you're just taking a second to deliberate today and talk a little bit about whether that would be appropriate. I understand it's kind of breaking protocol.
It is, and thank you for taking the time to come here. Unfortunately, it is our policy of the commission, and that without documentation, and without documentation, obviously, ahead of time, we don't do that. I would refer you, obviously, to our staff, and I believe that they will put you on in the hearing and give you the information that you're requesting, but we cannot, since we have nothing, I mean, we just don't have anything yet. And it's just totally against our protocol, so operating with, under that consideration, I would strongly recommend just working with our staff, and hopefully you'll be on the July for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Andrea, I appreciate it. Old business. Oh, I'm sorry, anybody else that wants to speak? Yeah, you're, yeah. I have to go back. Okay? Old business, anybody, or excuse me, any other public comments to add? Okay. Having said that, old business, we will reopen the, or open the public hearing for the Loom special land use, 1425 West Main. And obviously, we've gone through much of the preliminaries on that, and taken hold and done all of those kinds of things, so. Andy, do you want to go through this, and do we want to have our representative come up here again, or we've already gone through this?
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I don't think we need to walk through the entire report again. Obviously, because there was an issue with the publication of the buyback dress for the last meeting, so folks here, I think, were intending to comment, were not able to, so at this time, I think it would be appropriate to take over the comment, and then after that, you, you know, if you feel like a change to some of your conditions necessary to something like that, you would be, if you're right to do that. But you're right, I mean, we've gone through the report, we've gone through the standards of zoning, where it's, it's not necessary to do that against tonight, so, Mr. Chairman, I think I would suggest that you open up the floor and see if there's any additional comments or questions on that application.
Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the Loom special land use at 1425 West Main? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then, at this point. Commissioners, are there any further questions you have? And what the next step for us to do would be to ratify the public hearing and the special land use for Loom, 1425 West Main, that we did last time, and I'll lead it off, it was moved by May, so I'll move it again, and it was seconded by Dave. Dave, do you want to second it again?
Second.
Okay. Sue, can we have a roll call vote to ratify the Loom special land use at 1425 West Main?
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you very much. And then, the second one is the Rare special land use at 2264 West Main. I'd like to open up the public hearing for that, and again, I'll ask the committee to give us the background on that.
Yep, the exact same situation, so obviously, there are different businesses, though the most significant difference between the two is that Rare is a redeveloped site, so they're a new building, new everything, whereas Loom, they're reusing an existing building, but procedurally, Mr. Chairman, it's the same thing, let's open the public hearing, and here, if there are any additional comments, I think we should do that.
Okay, and I have opened the public hearing. Are there any comments on the Rare special land use for 2264 West Main? And when you come up, please, give us your name and address, please.
Hey, John Pickens, I'm the pastor at First Baptist Church, which is right across the street, 2275 West Main, and just want to express a couple of concerns that we have. I sent a letter before the first meeting that you had, and assuming you guys got that.
John, I'll interrupt you, it was right here.
Okay, great. So just the two concerns, one being the, I believe, the policy right now is there's a 500 feet or 1,000 feet, I can't remember off the top of my head, setback for schools, daycares, that sort of thing, and I'm assuming that is because of safety issues that related to resale of adult use of marijuana and children. And we have children's programs that go on all throughout the week in our facility, and so just wanted to make that concern known. And then the other concern is just, as a pastor's heart deals with people who are trying to, at times, get off of marijuana, dealing with that addiction, I just have a hard time with people coming out of our exit from our church, and they're going to have marijuana right there at the resale store, looking at it as a temptation. That's just a concern I have as a pastor, in that particular location of that building. So those are the two concerns that I have. I also realize that we weren't involved when it came to the policymaking, and that was on us, I wasn't aware of it, and didn't, wasn't proactive on it as well, and we're also not going to be combative in any sense, it's just, we wanted to express these concerns when we have the policy.
Thank you very much, John. And I can, John, I can tell you, in all honesty, we did talk about that very issue for over a year, about a year and a half, we had open meetings, and we did obviously talk about that at the moment. Andy, do you want to give the state rules for how that came about, and maybe he can give you some further?
Yeah, so it is 1,000 feet, and that number originally comes from, the Act itself states that, although we're private schools, there must be 1,000 foot in every instance, so in discussions with the Planning Commission and City Council, they then opted to exclude daycares in that radius because they're similar function to a school, so that's where that particular decision, that number came from, but it was really kind of taking direction and taking guidance, I guess, from the state rules, and then modifying it a little bit from there.
Andy, wasn't it preschool? I don't remember, it was preschool.
It's, so the state, yeah, 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 you're probably right, so the Act specifies only K through 12, although we're private schools, and then probably the Planning Commission expanded that scope a little bit.
Preschool.
Yeah, to include preschools, yeah.
Also, John, in our deliberations a month ago, roughly, we did make the buffer zone on Main Street, and we talked about that, we tried to make it as aggressive as we possibly could, you know, obviously, there's certain laws and regulations that came, but we did discuss it, obviously, with your letter being read, so there was some deliberation given to it.
Yeah, and certainly, that coupled with the fact that I got a phone call from, I believe it was Andrea, when she was here on Thursday, and to find out that they're pursuing a row facility right next to our building as well, and so we feel surrounded, but at the same time, that's just, it is what it is, too, these are just concerns we have.
Thank you, and obviously, anytime something comes up on any one of our meetings, don't be, you know, please come, because that's how we make decisions, and we work a lot, so that we can make the best decision possible.
And we recognize that it's legal, so, and so it's not so much an issue of pushing back on the law, it's more of just concerns of location and our facility, and our programs, and how's that going to be impacted, and I quite frankly, don't think we have enough information, because this is really new to, not just Lowell, but I mean, it's new to our country relatively, so just some concerns there, so.
Any other speakers on this up, on this subject? Sir, if you want, please, feel free, just come up to the middle and give us your name and address.
Well, I'm Robert Copeland, and I was a Lowell high school teacher for 30 years here, and my concern is, I know what the law is, you know, what it was approved and revoked, but I have concerns because over the years, I've seen a lot of kids affected by marijuana use, and it seems to me that we're going the wrong way, to be very honest with it, with things, and I am an elder of the church, by the way, so, but over the years, when I saw kids in my classes, and I knew they were on marijuana, and I have a grandson that is on marijuana, and he's gone to harder drugs, so anyone that says it's not a gateway drug, I don't buy that, and so obviously, I have great concerns, and to put the building, the business across from our church, is pretty coax, you know, it's right across the street, so that's my concern, is to, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we were considering the radius in which they could be around daycare, so I think we expanded it.
Yeah, we went from 500 to 1,000.
We really did try to, one of the concerns was just pushing it so far into a dark corner that it becomes this bigger problem, that it's just like, you don't even have reputable versions of the business coming into town because you pushed them so far into the corner that now you just made it so real bad, really bad, so that's.
Yeah, it is a.
It wasn't fair business practice.
Yeah, yeah, we had to give them location once it was adopted, so, having said that, any other speakers? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and on this one, I believe the motion was made by Chambers, and the second was by Cadwalader, and this would be to ratify the Rare special land use.
I'll make a motion that we re-accept it.
I'll second.
And any further discussions on the commission? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes.
And Chair Barker, we need to go back and also ratify the vote on the very first one, the Airbnb.
I'm getting it.
Okay.
Yep, yep. The Airbnb update, 2179 G Drive, and that was moved, we don't, that was not a public hearing, so I don't think we need to do a public hearing on it.
No, it's not a public hearing.
No, but because the notice applied to all the attendings, I was prepared on the ten to be redoing it.
All right, oh yeah, we'll redo it, but I don't think we have to have a public hearing.
Correct, yep.
Okay. So with the Airbnb update at 2179 G Drive, was moved by Chambers and seconded by me, Marty, you want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we re-accept that.
And I will second it, and is there any further discussion on it?
Is this the one we were talking about a couple of years ago?
Yes, yes, and they came back to their annual main meeting, and we re-upped them for next May, and denied that they asked for eight parking lots, and we only gave them six, so.
Yeah, the same as last. But we just stuck to it.
Yeah. Sue, having said that, any other discussion, I guess, Sue, voice.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes.
Thank you all, thank you for the consideration from the general public, we appreciate that. Then the next thing would be the approval of the minutes of previous meetings from May 11, our regular meeting, which would include all of these motions that we made, but it doesn't include the ratification, so is there a motion to approve our minutes from May 11?
Is it in there that I was absent?
Yes, up until a certain point.
Okay, there's no if we needed to change it or not, because I was a little late.
Yeah, and then I wrote in the minutes when you arrived.
Right, yep, yep. So Marty, you're a group?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Making that motion and a second.
Making a second.
And discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from May 11, our regular meeting, please, voice vote, or, no, let's do a regular roll call, sorry.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yep.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramm, and is absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. I think that brings us up to, relatively, up to date. Number six, old business, Riverview Flats, Site Plan Amendment, and Todd, you want to come on up, and we'll.
Yes, thank you.
We'll go through that process, I think we're going to have Andy break us in here, at least.
Yeah, Andy, are you willing to give a summary, then I'll kind of.
Yeah, let's do that first, and then we'll go from there. And this is the review, actually, of the Site Plan Amendment that you're bringing in July?
Correct.
Okay. So this is for informational purposes at this point?
Yes, so they have a plot, just so we're clear, so Todd and I have been talking for a couple of months now, and he's presented various kind of options and different plans for modifications to the site for Riverview Flats. Some of what they're proposing to do, probably the most notable of which, is they're going to realign the street, so as we recall before, it came south from King Street and then ran into Monroe Street, kind of just come on a 90 degree angle there, so now it's going to actually connect all the way down to High Street on the south, and I believe we're going to have an intersection on Monroe. There's also some changes to the size of the building, so they proposed to take down more schools than they had proposed originally. There's more parking on the site, and that was the lengthy discussion, and both the Planning Commission and City Council, it was the first time around, we did generate enough parking on the site. So it appears that onsite parking has been expanded by about 14 spaces over what was there previously, so that's good. The sidewalks have been modified a little bit, the private garages have been modified a little bit, some of the stormwater, and so obviously, there's a lot of necessary changes that affect the site because of these changes coming along to the street. So, let's see what else here, so the purpose of this meeting is kind of that pre-review discussion, so we'll have, we'll do a formal review at the next meeting, we have to follow the exact same process as we did the first time. So we'll have a review at the next meeting, the City Council will have, look for the public hearing after they give recommendation, whether that's next one or at some point in the future. They'll hold a hearing, then ultimately make a decision. A couple of things to mention on the site is that the actual, the physical boundaries of the site have been adjusted a little bit, so I believe they have now acquired, I think it's like seven feet, because that might tie the Jason to the river, or the kind of spaces, the condos that are going to be in the west side, and the right of way for High Street has been adjusted slightly after some work with the city, so the memo that we provided to you tonight is just kind of a fairly high-level overview of kind of what to expect, some of the changes that will be coming. You don't have to make any decisions tonight, but just understand that this is coming, and if you have questions for Todd, or comments, or if you want to, if you have any kind of discussion with them, that would be an appropriate time to give them any kind of feedback on that updated site plan, or something that you like, if you don't like, that would be the time to give them some feedback so they can go back to work with, which is engineers, and make sure that they can address any of your concerns with their next, you know, their next set of plans, if you have some plans, so that's kind of where we are, if you have any questions, I'd have your answer.
Thanks, Andy. Before we ask our questions, Todd, is there anything you want to just add in general before, and then we'll ask the commissioners for questions?
Andy covered it very nicely. The resolution that we arrived at with the city some time ago has allowed us to improve the design, and so we did so. It's allowed us, as Andy said, to add more parking, more landscaping, and we've also kept the drive internal, instead of dropping out across from Justin St. John's house, which eliminates headlights shining into his den room, so we feel that this design's a nicer one than the one we previously submitted and was approved, and that's a product of the resolution we reached some time ago.
Todd, I have just a general question, and obviously, all the other commissioners will have many of questions. Will all of the buildings and everything be done in kind of one phase, because you were talking about doing a second phase, and it kind of looks like that's, or a third phase, I guess, is even more.
Yeah, so.
Tell me about the phases.
Yeah, so still phases. Second phase would be the school building itself, third phase would be the vacant property. So a little bit of a recap, so making adjustments to a PUD is not uncommon, so then what's assessed in conversations that Andy and I had is what is staff approval, and what requires going through the process again, and us dropping the drive off of Monroe changes the drives, and we both agreed that, yeah, we probably should go through the process again. So we're a little bit between, all right, we want to amend the PUD to reflect, we're not doing the drive, but we're not really ready to go into the second phase yet, but we've got a lot of it designed and are comfortable talking about it, so we're in a little bit of an awkward spot there, but we want to amend the PUD to reflect dropping the drive off of Monroe, and I suspect we'll be right on the heels of that, looking for Phase Two discussion. So what Phase Two will look like is very similar to what we've submitted for the next meeting, with more details dialed in on that. So that first statement, Andy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody else?
Good.
We look forward to July then, and we'll take a hard look at it at that point.
Terrific.
Do everything we can to make sure that, you know, project will close.
Yes, thank you for the support, and it's good to see businesses open today.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We do not have any new business, so staff reports. Andy, Sue?
Nothing further.
Nothing at this time.
Yeah? Are we all caught up on our Sony ones? Do we still have definitions, or what do we got?
I think it's just definitions is the only thing left. I could certainly work on that, you'll have a live view in the next meeting, I think, so I'm not going to bring it into the live, but perhaps, I guess, you'll want to have probably three items on your agenda for next one.
Okay, so just don't want to lose sight of it.
Yeah, right, yeah, me neither. I'll double check, I think it's just, I think it's just definitions, so, and I think that's in pretty good shape, so it might not be a bad change, I'll take a look. I got a fact, new things, obviously, with the new one.
Well, Bruce, maybe we can have, just bring back, put it on old business, just so it stays fresh in your mind, and we can just have a hit on it.
Yeah, yeah, if he's going to put it on the calendar progress, that's fine, I don't mind that, I just, I didn't want to lose sight of it.
No, but that way, then it comes to us in our package.
Yeah, we can put it on old business, Sue, let's add it to old business.
For July or August?
I'm done there.
Okay.
As long as it's mentioned there, we can, you know, that way we won't lose sight of it.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else from the staff? No? Sue?
No.
Commissioners, Plank?
One more.
There you go. Dave?
Good.
Colin?
It feels wonderful to have a real meeting in person with you groups, with this group. As much as I like Zoom, we found that Zoom can really mess with you, and you don't even know that it happens, so it's good to be back. Yeah, local businesses all open, support your, support your downtown, wear your masks, stay safe, that's it.
I will, I will reaffirm the in-house meeting, the mic call, the chair, go, you know, give me some option, and I said, stop right there, I want to do it in person, and to do it, because you can't see people, you can't see the reaction, you hear it, but you can't see it, and you can't feel it, so you can't feel the intensity or anything along that line, so there is nothing like a public open meeting, that's where I'm concerned, so I'm a firm believer. Tony?
Hi, I'm good.
Ready to go back to school?
They don't want me in their hands.
Yeah, that's good, that's really good. I don't have anything either at this point, again, I do want to apologize to the commissioners and staff particularly, it was just something that came up, and there wasn't anything new to do. It was just something that came up and there wasn't anything you could do about it, so that's the way it is and we're back on track and everything's going away, so I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I have support.
I'll support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we stand adjourned?